...
Yes. Sure, would you pray with me? Most gracious heavenly father, we come to you this evening and we ask that you be over this meeting, help us to gather the information we need, help us to take in the information as we decipher the decisions that need to be made as we move forward to be the best that we possibly can in Canyon, Texas. Lord be with all of those presenting and those here, continue to bless our city and be with each of us as we go into this holiday season and celebrate the birth of Christ in your name I pray. Amen.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that takes us to the approval of the minutes of the May November 18th, 2020.
How's it going?
And I'm looking at the second, the proof of minutes are breached, all members in five hours, right? Oh, it's like time, okay. That takes us to five public comment, kind of comment on various decisions. And we do have one person who signed in, Blade House. And Blade, if you'd like to come up and speak, and if you would, say your name and address, and then we do ask to keep it to about three minutes.
Okay. You want me to just come up to the front?
Uh, yeah. Just come around. All right.
Council members, my name is Blade Hawes, and I'm a part of a local organization called PATH, Panhandle Active Transportation Health, and we're here to support the continuation of public transport and walking and biking paths from the elementary and primary schools. We're mainly here to make sure that the city continues the progression of walkable and safe environments. This will help decrease congestion and improve the everyday lives of not just the kids, but the people living in it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And I think if you'd like to reach out to John, if he had to visit with you about just the progress of that.
We did, we spoke about 30 minutes prior to this, and went over the plans and showed him the diagrams, and I have introduced him to Lucas, the man with the plan. So we should be in good shape. Thank you.
Well, next, we are going to have a work session, that's our entire agenda here today and whole plan reason to be here today. So looking forward to this discussion, and also really appreciate those that are on the construction committee being here. And we really set this up as a joint meeting, so if you all have questions, want to put any info in, feel free to do that. And you're fine sitting where you are, if you want to go to the front, and anyway, I feel like you all are as much part of the discussion as we are, so.
At this point, we're going to turn it over to John Gamble from Sims and Architects. We've been working with them for a while. He's going to lead us through a PowerPoint, and our chiefs are going to jump in and talk about their facilities, and then we'll see, we've got additional information we can add throughout, through the process as we go. So at this point, I'll turn it over to John, if you're good with that.
Well, thanks for having me here today. I'm John Gamble with Sims Architects. Like John said, we wanted to kind of bring you up to speed of how we got where we're at. That's always something that's interesting, I think, and it's important. For about two years now, we've been working on and off with the city of Canyon, with the police chief, the fire chief, and their staff, the different heads of the city departments, and we've gone through, and we've done what's called a program of spaces, and we've looked at all the things that they need. And it's a really big boring spreadsheet, I didn't bring it because you don't want to, you wouldn't be able to read it anyway up there on the PowerPoint, but we've gone through that and we've looked at it. We actually had a consultant that we brought in who was an expert in fire and police, and looked at things with them, and we did the big wish list of if we could have everything brand new, and everything we could possibly ever want, not just need, but everything we could ever want, and looked at that for, you know, 10, 15, and 20-year duration out, and things got really large really quick and very expensive. So we've gone back after looking at those ideas and tried to get to the needs that were presented. We're talking with the fire and the police, we looked at, and we put drawings together, and we'll show you a few of the drawings, I know you've probably seen some of them before, of some ideas that we could do to try to utilize the facilities that are here and the Gold Star Building, and turn it into the police station. And we've taken those drawings, we've done what we call schematic design. And so what we did was we took those programs of spaces, we tried to implement those things, and do the things that were essential needs. Once we took these together with all, with these six different areas that we looked at, we took them to four different general contractors, and we were really blessed to have all four of them come back and provide us with what they call an opinion of probable cost. Because they don't have a crystal ball, or they'd be doing something else, I guess, you know, playing the stock market or something, they have to make very educated opinions that they give us. They look back at past projects they've done, they put these numbers together, they look at the level of quality that we need for a city facility that will last like this building 50-plus years, and take our drawings, and they ask some questions, and they get what, we would say it's a 30,000-foot view. We're not worried about what the doorknob is, but we know that there is a door handle there that is of high quality, if that makes sense. You know, we're going to have the power that we need, we're going to have the air conditioning that we need, the question's asked, does this particular building need new air conditioning? Well, no, it doesn't, or yes, this one does, depending on, you know, depending on which piece of the project we're looking at. And then they try to provide us, they provide us with this thing. What's so great about this is some of the numbers you saw previously, and our new numbers that we have today, they are all, since we have four, we take that average, and for the past 30 years, our firm has used this, and we've been fairly accurate. We've taken, we take this and we take their hard construction number, and it's not, I shouldn't say a hard number, it is a, it is a, what they think it will, opinion of what they think it will cost projecting out in a year or a year and a half when it actually gets bid and built and all that, and they take it, and we add on top of that fees, soft costs, like furnishing the building that you're, you know, that you're using, and then a owner's contingency, because we know that things will sometimes change a bit as you're, you know, as you're going, as we're going through the design process, that we, hey, we didn't think of this before, but now we, this is something that we really do need, and we need to implement this. So that's kind of where we, how we've gotten where we are. I'm pulling this up on my phone because we were able to connect the easiest, but the first thing what we did was we looked at placing the police station in the Gold Star Building, it's approximately 19,000 square feet. We remodeled the interior and tried to provide things, and I'll, we'll ask Steve to talk here in just a minute about the needs that they have there. And that's what we feel like we've pared this down to, the real needs, so that the police can serve the citizens of Canyon well. We did an extra refresh, this is just some ideas, you know, a lot of these things, there's more details that will go into them. We found out, actually just in the past couple of weeks, that a new roof is needed on the building, so we've added that into the cost of the, of the project, but the good thing about that is, is we spend this money to refurbish, remodel this building, having new foundation's a really good idea, because now we have a, you know, a 30-year warranty that we have on that roof, and we protect that investment that you're putting into that building. I'm going to go ahead and scroll on up to the floor plan, this is where we got into the nuts and bolts with, with the police chief and looked at these things, how this building would work, and I'd like Steve to say, say a few things, just to talk about the way the public will interact versus the way the officers and everyone will interact, so that the, it's really been thought through about what we would do with this existing facility while trying to keep the envelope and maintain some of the things that were already there in order to keep the costs, you know, reasonable.
Okay. So, so we, so really, this building, the first floor, starting on the first floor is, we, we don't really feel like we have any fluff in the building, we, everything is functional. If you, if you start at the front of the building and you walk through the waiting area and the, and off to the soft interview room, you'll notice there's a bathroom kind of near that soft interview room. That, that just makes our, our area where we're going to bring the public and where the public's going to come to see us, that makes it more accessible and a little, a little more friendly. The soft interview room gets the, gets the people who are coming to talk to the cops, it gets them out of the public, so that we have a private place that we can be. The, the public bathroom is obviously important because otherwise, we'd have to call somebody up to walk people through to the, to the private bathrooms at the back that, that are existing in the building now, but those are the only ones, those on the, on the very top of the, I guess, at the very top there, those are the only ones that are, that are existing now. So that was important, we moved the receptionist back behind that wall where the waiting area is, and, and we asked them to put in a, a window that they can communicate through. We felt like this, this would give us the opportunity to have our waiting area open all the time so that people could come in, it's a safe place to go if you're, if you're running from somebody that's beating you up, or you, you need to get out of, you feel like you're being followed or chased, road rage, whatever that is, it gives you a safe place to go and wait for an officer to come in and take care of your problem. But it also moves the receptionist back where we're at in the main part of the building, and it'll protect them a little bit from being out there with the, with the public when they, when they bring those people in, some of those people are a little unpredictable sometimes. We added some, some office space, but, but some of that office space is existing, but the office space that, that we did add is, is, it's really built or drawn out with the future in mind, I feel like this building is, is going to be good for us for, for seriously 15 to 20 years. The detective area, if you notice, the detectives' area there, you can see that there's a sergeant's office and then three workspaces. Right now, we have a sergeant and two detectives, so that already gives us the ability to add two detectives over the next several years. Our detectives carry about 150 cases a year, so for, for us to need to add two more detectives, we're talking years and years and years down the road, like that, that space is going to be, is going to be viable for, for many years to come. And the detectives work in their office most of the day, they, they're out and about some, but a large portion of their day is in the office, so they need, they need that office space. If you look over a little further down at the sergeant's area, those, those are our field supervisors, those are the supervisors that, that monitor the patrol officers and make sure everything's going good on patrol. And we feel like those four spaces are going to be, again, they're going to be viable for many years to come. We have four shifts, and each shift has a sergeant, our shifts are 12-hour shifts, so each shift has a sergeant, and our, our span of control right now for, for our sergeants on, on patrol is one sergeant for every three patrol officers. To, to reach the, the ideal span of control for a supervisor like that is one sergeant for every six patrol officers. So we could increase our patrol force by 12 people and still not need to add sergeant space, because those 12 people would, and that's a huge increase, and I don't know how many years down the road we'll be before we need to increase our patrol force to 12 people, that's, that's just a gigantic increase for our, for a department our size in our city. But, but like I said, the, the whole building, even with the first floor, is just going to, this is going to give us years and years and years of, of ability to work out of this building, even as the department continues to, to grow with the city, and we add people for different assignments, that we're still going to have plenty of room to work in this building without having to come in here and add stuff or renovate stuff. These renovations, I think, will, will last for many years. On the, on the back wall there, or the bottom wall, I guess we can call it, you'll see there's three lieutenants' offices. Once again, that, that gives us a little extra space, because we only have two lieutenants right now, so I don't know when we would, would add a third lieutenant, that's not even on the radar at this point, but that gives us an office that, that, that gives us just a little bit more growing room. The, the interview rooms that INT2 and INT1 with the monitor in the middle, that, that's really needed, our interview rooms right now are, are kind of inadequate. The, but that gives us two interview rooms where we can separate people, and, and sometimes that's what we do in police work, is we separate people so we can get one side of the story and go compare it with the other, back and forth, and ideally, that monitor room in the middle, that just makes for, that just makes for better police work and better investigations, because then you have people that, who can monitor those interviews and, and kind of pick up on some of those things. I know it's getting a little bit into the nuts and bolts of police work, but the, the setup is just important. It's, it really, it, I would say this brings us into the, into the 21st century, just because we're in the 21st century, but really, most departments that I've been around and seen have, have had this set up for years and years and years. This is, this is not a new setup, this is, this is the way it should have been years and years ago. The, the rest of the first floor is, is pretty much existing, the lieutenants, we have two lieutenants right now, patrol and administration, so they need their own office, they work in the office every day. We have the, my office and the assistant chief's office, we're, we're Monday through Friday people, so we're, we're in the building quite a bit, and then we have that little corner conference room, just gives us a place where we, we have some, a place where we can go and work and do the things that kind of keep the department running, and, and it can be used for, for whatever, if they have shift meetings or any of those little things, that little conference room is a little bit nicer for a meeting than, than the big muster room. The muster room, as you see there, is, is, it's existing with that storage to the side that, that's existing, so really, there's nothing, nothing new about that, it does have that collapsible wall between the break room and the muster rooms, so we just want to leave that, that's going to be super nice. We feel like this will be the place where we, where we obviously muster our people before we send them out on shift, and, and where we have our meetings, and it'll be, it's large enough for us to do some trainings in there, and, and this will be the place where most, most of the time the officers are working. If you've, if you've seen our place downstairs, you know that the officers have little cubicles that, that they have their, their stuff in, and they use mostly for storage, more so than sitting down and working, because they all gather around the, the conference table that we have in our muster room right now, to do their reports mostly. That, that's going away because that's, that's storage space that is mostly what it's used for, so we felt like it'd be a little more productive. We're not, not give, we're not taking so much away from the officers as we're, as we're giving them, because we feel like they're still going to work in that muster room to do their paperwork and their, and their reports, because most of the time they're out on the street. The takeaway from the officers, when we, when we take away their cubicles and their little storage spaces, at the bottom wall on the basement part, basement floor plan, you can see that there's a locker room there with some showers, and that, after talking to the officers and, and seeing, I've been, this is my third department to be at, and I've been in, in hundreds of police buildings, a locker room is more important to the officers than most anything else. Like I said, they spend most of their day out in a car, driving, patrol, and taking calls, that kind of thing. Really, they just want a place to put their stuff, they have a lot of stuff they have to carry, and then the, the ability to, to shower up Um, and then the, the ability to, to shower up before, after work, or, or, um, if you move across the hall there to the training and exercise room, um, that, that's just kinda for their, their mental and physical well-being. But that, that gives them something that, that they can have, and they have their, their storage, so they've lost their little cubicles, but they've got their, their locker room storage, and they got a place to work out. They can come in before they go on shift and, and work out, then shower and, and be fresh and clean, ready to go for shift, or they can work out after shift and clean up before they go home. Uh, we just felt like that was a, that was a great thing for the officers. Um, I, the, you know, I told the mayor the other day, the, this commission, since I've been here, has always supported the, the, uh, the workers that are actually out in the field. Y'all have always been super supportive of those people that are out there doing the, doing the real work. Um, and so that's kinda, that was a thing that we're trying to, to build, uh, into this, to, to kinda give the officers a little, to show them that we appreciate them, and here's your, here's your space and do your thing. But the training and exercise area, I mean, that'll, that'll be multifunctional. We don't have any great plans for buying a bunch of equipment or anything like that. We'll, we'll put our mats out there, so we can wrestle and do self-defense classes and that kinda thing. Uh, we will buy some exercise equipment as that, as that becomes available, but, but that's really just a big space that, that we were trying to, to make available, that we could do some different things in. Um, if you, if you look back to, to my right, or to the right side of that screen, uh, there's a, you see the staircase, and there's a wall there. Um, so we, we, we were, by building that wall across there, we can secure those doors, and that will, um, on the first floor, that will, that will allow our entryway to, to be open to the public all the time, and they can go down those stairs, but they can't get past those doors. So really, it secures our building, um, and, and takes out a lot of the work that would be required to, to make the first floor secure and the second floor secure. We, if they go down the stairs and, and hit a locked door, we're okay with that. They'll just come back up. Um, and then at the very, at the very back, uh, you see the emergency operations center? We met with Max, um, I went blank on his last name, sorry. Dunlap, yeah, there we go, sorry. Um, we met with Max Dunlap here a while back, and he looked at it. Um, and, and all of that, the only thing different there is the, where the walls are for the locker room and the training and exercise area. That, the rest of that is existing. Um, and so Matt looked at that, and, and, uh, with the offices that are already existing there, um, we can make a really nice emergency operations center, uh, that, that would be available for, um, everything we use the emergency operations center for in Amarillo. You know, there's lots of meetings and trainings and that kinda thing, but we can do those things here in Canyon if, if we didn't wanna go to Amarillo or, or, um, or we needed to be here. So that, that's just a great big space that, uh, Max has a bunch of stuff to put in, but, um, that's kinda after the fact. There's really no, no modification to the building to make that happen, and, and that would be a good thing for Canyon. The, excuse me, I'm so sorry. The, the other offices that are, that are up near the top, um, the, there's three offices and a big server room with an office attached to it, and then the mechanical room. Those are all existing, and, uh, we don't really have any plans for those right now. Um, at, police-wise anyway, I don't, I don't know what else the city might have plans for that, but, um, that's, that's existing, so really nothing needs to be done there. And, uh, and that, obviously, there's a, a gigantic space for growth there, there should we need to be there. The, uh, I think I kinda touched on everything. The evidence area, I guess I didn't touch on, I'm, I'm back on the first floor, sorry. Um, did you say stop?
No, I said yes. Now cover please.
The, uh, yeah, the evidence area is the only thing, uh, those are two separate vaults right now, and you can see we put a connecting door in the middle. Um, that's just for growth, um, and those evidence vaults will be, our, our evidence vaults are, we only have two people that are allowed to go in those. It's Lieutenant Stout, who's the evidence custodian, and Captain Coggins, who are the backup. Uh, even, even if I go in those rooms, um, I have access, but we have to document why I access those rooms. It's a big deal. Um, so those will always be secured. So if you see that area that's kind of out in front of those, where, uh, one says control or counter with hood, and then storage cabinets and evidence lockers, and that little booking area, those, uh, that's, that's really a minor addition to, to the big open space where we're at there. Um, but those are, those are pretty vital. The, uh, the, the counter with the hood is for processing evidence, and, and we have to have that hood, because we have to vent those chemicals that they use to spray on to, to get fingerprints and that kinda thing. It, it gets a little toxic. Most of those are pretty, um, pretty strong chemicals. I don't, I don't know chemical stuff, but they're, they're strong, you don't wanna breathe a bunch of those. Um, the evidence lockers give the, the officers a place to lock evidence. Um, once they collect it and they document that they collected it, then they lock it up, and they can't touch it again, and they don't have access to those lockers. So that's really important, and that's just the booking and the storage area there. That's, the, the main thing to note about that is that that's all just, all, all drawn up, and, and, um, this, this was one of the things that, that John's consultant in, in Florida that we talked to on the phone. Like, he, he can, he can come up with thousands and thousands of things to make evidence better, and they're all super-duper expensive. This is, this is the basics, but this is gonna be good for us. This is, we, we have to have this. The main thing with evidence, uh, of course, you know, this is chain of custody, and, and it has to be accounted for, so that's really important for us. Um, in the, in the detective area, kinda in that same spot there, I guess I skipped that too, that's, it says comp, um, that's for the computers. Um, you, you're probably all aware that nowadays, a lot of, a lot of investigations are, are probably most investigations involve some sort of social media, uh, telephones and, and electronics, computers, that kinda thing. Uh, we, we have begun, and we will continue to grow our, our computer accessibilities. Um, we, we can download cell phones, and we can, um, we can download computers and that kinda thing, but those, those take a, a, a computer lab, is what they call it, and we'll, we'll continue to have to do that. That's, that's not gonna change, that's not gonna get any easier. If we can't do those things, then, then our investigations, we're gonna have to call in outside people. So, so the computer lab is gonna be vital to the, to the detective area there. Um, I feel like I, kinda fast, but I feel like I've covered most of the areas of, of, uh, if, if you have a question about a specific area, I'd be, I'd be happy to, to answer. I kinda made some notes on all the different areas, just on kinda why we, why we need them, so if you still have a concern about an area, I could, I could try to explain.
Well, I will say that Steve has thought this through. He helped us lay every bit of this out, so that it works in the way that their process works, and that, that's very important. Um, that, that's what I always tell people when we, you know, we come to, I'm not a doctor and I'm not a fireman, I'm not a policeman, but I can listen to you, and you can teach me how it works, and I can lay it out, and we can walk through those, those spaces and understand that they work really well. Um, one minor thing, uh, Steve mentioned some of the, uh, room in the basement, there's some room, right there in the center of the space, there's a big open space, they could have some open office put there in the future also. That's one of our big deals, whenever we're doing municipalities, that we want to give you the, the thought that, it's like this building, it's been here for fifty years, you haven't, you haven't done a whole lot of remodeling things, you've, you've made it, you know, you've, you've used things and, but we, giving you those spaces so that you can expand into them as needed. So, we're trying to do the, the very best that we can do, um, with this building. Um, anything else on police?
You know, I, I really wondered, yeah, go ahead, about us addressing each project while we're at it, and, and while everybody's thinking about that.
Yep, that's great.
And so, if that works, then yeah, I think that's perfect.
On, uh, the sergeant's offices, are those walled, or are those cubicles, are those walled offices?
Right now, we're showing their walls, that they'd be, they wouldn't, they wouldn't go all the way up, but they would actually be a physical wall. But that's one of those deals at this point, and that's what I've tried to explain to everybody. Um, at this point, it's such a high-level estimate, and we go, oh, we really need to run those walls all the way up and put a ceiling in. Okay, that's, that's a real, you know, that's kind of, it doesn't move the needle much, if that makes sense. So, uh, right now, the thought was that they'd go to say, uh, eight or nine feet, but that they would still be open above. If they decide, well, sound is an issue with that, okay, we can add a ceiling and run those up. It's not, that, that's not a, a real big cost at all, so.
Or a cubicle, I think is what she's also referring to, John. I mean, if, if we needed to go that direction, that, that could be a check.
For sure, but, but, yes, right now, there actually are walls, they just weren't going all the way up to the ceiling.
And then if you'll scroll in at the corner there on that soft interview, and then there's the small, the little small bathroom, so you have a door there between that soft interview and that bathroom, and I'm just thinking along the lines of the waiting room, if someone needs to go to the restroom.
Oh, yeah.
Why wouldn't you move that wall back? That way that, uh, restroom is just open, and you wouldn't have to worry about going back through a closed door.
We, we had, uh, I, I got a little drawing or a little addition on my, on my copy of the thing. We, we realized we needed to move that door back.
Okay, I was just thinking.
The, the soft interview, the soft interview room will be secured.
Okay.
So that, they have to wait for an officer to come and, and get that, but that, that's because we're gonna make that a nicer room, so that we have a, a nice place to take people and sit down. Um, it's hard for some people to come in and tell us what's going on, um, and so we kinda want a, a soft and comfortable place. Right now, they have to do that in the lobby downstairs, or they have to go to, to where we interview, to the suspect interview rooms. And so this would be a nicer room. But yeah, we realized we needed to, the soft interview room will be secured, but the bathroom will have access, we just move that door back a little bit, and that way, when, when people come in, because we don't man the, the building twenty-four hours a day. Um, so, there, at nighttime, or in the evenings after five, people could come in and there'd be nobody in the building whatsoever, and, and we, uh, kinda in, out in the weeds again, but we'd, we'd have a phone where they just pick up and it goes directly to dispatch. They tell the dispatcher, hey, I'm at the police department, I need somebody right now. They'll dispatch an officer, and the officer will meet him. But in that waiting time, then they can be in the waiting room, or they can use the restroom, whatever. They have a comfortable place to be, get out of the weather, get warm, that kinda thing, or if, like I said, if they're scared, then they can, will, will at least be able to see it, and, and will, as soon as they call and say, I'm scared, I'm in here, um, then.
Cause they're scared, monitoring, getting a monitoring on them.
Yes, yes. And we realize that, that we may get the, that one or two people every few years that come in there and tear stuff up, but, um, we'll catch them, because we'll have cameras, and, and that's just part of the police business, people break stuff.
It was really interesting listening to the police officers talk about that soft interview room, 'cause you're going, wow, victim has to come in, and you need a place to go that's comfortable, and, I, I don't know, it just, it really made you think. You know, you don't always think about stuff like that, you think about the bad guys that they're taking back. No, what about the people who are coming to, need to be interviewed because they were victimized by somebody? So, um, they, they, they thought a lot about that space and hope, uh, welcoming and, at least inviting for the, for the difficult things they're going through.
And it's a conference room on this drawing, because it's existing. You, you've seen it. It's, it's a nice room right there at the front, so why mess with it?
I really liked the plans on it, so I think it's well-thought-out. I think, uh, it really uses existing offices, you know, above that, you got the vaults there, you know, you've got existing offices around there, uh, you have the, the muster room, that's really already there. Um, you know, e- even the restrooms over on the east side, I, you know, probably some substantial cost, I think, to, you know, New Kyle and, and Ecos and all too. But, you know, we're really using the building, I think, well, and, and I really like that. Um, you know, I, I, I realize there, you know, we're putting in some walls down the basement, certainly for locker rooms and, uh, redoing showers where, but that's where funding is already, so that's gotta help some too. Um, and the one directly up there on, on, uh, the, the restroom. So, I really like the plan. I, I think it, it's great, um, I love it. One thing I don't like, I don't like the exterior. I, I think we've got, I think, the most beautiful building in Canyon right now, and I, I think the, all this, all that, I think the drawings are uglier, and, and we're gonna put money into it, and so I think that marble that's on the outside of that is just, you know, beautiful, and, and, uh, you know, there, there may be some enhancement there, obviously, signage, make it look like a police building, and, and maybe some enhancement.
Yeah, for sure, and that's the thing, is we wanted to, we wanted to enhance it, and we don't want it to look like the Gold Star Building anymore, even though we, even if we can keep some of the, that. So we wanted to be able to, to say, this is the police station, and it, you know, it has a real, a real presence there, uh, on fourth, so we can definitely, but, but the point is, is that there's money there to revitalize the outside of the building and not just leave it like it is. Um, that, that was the thing that we looked at, we were going, we hate for people to go, oh yeah, they're down there in the Gold Star, no, it's the police station, you know, so get, to, to give them some, I, real good identity there, and I think we can reutilize lots that's there, if that's the desire, for sure, so.
That's a piece of, and I wonder if that's a piece that's gone into the cost of this that has also increased, you know, some of its and all, is, is that exterior as well?
There, and there is some cost, uh, involved in that, but there's some refreshing that needs to be done there. The, the top of that building's been covered in what's called EFAS, which is styrofoam, with a real thin layer of, of, uh, you know, it's not a real stucco. Um, that's not a, that's not a good long-term deal, since that's been there for, I think, twenty or twenty-five years, that it needs to be taken off and replaced at least, so that you have, again, thinking about the half-year building. So yeah, there's definitely cost that needs to go there, but what that looks like, that can, that can change, uh, you know, what it looks like, for sure.
I, I wouldn't plan on putting big costs into the exterior, just because, you know, I, I, I get, and, and, yeah, that piece of it, reviewing some of that, but, uh, I thought was, uh, one, really surprised at the, the number that these bids came in at.
Well, they're not bids, their opinions are probable costs. I'm, I'm not trying to, but, but that is true, they're, they're looking at the thirty-thousand-foot view, but we've, using this, and you look at the hard number that we, you know, the building cost, when I say the bricks and mortar, at the three-point-nine million on average, and we can see there's, there's a high and there's a low, and we always kinda say, well, that's why we like to average, and we throw those out, because those guys, they were thinking too much, and another guy hadn't thought enough, and so those kinda median numbers. We've been pretty successful at hitting those medium numbers for the needs that, you know, that we need to.
And while we're, while we're talking about cost, let's go ahead, and, once you go ahead and explain, we've, we've added the roof, and we have a new OPC. Why don't you hand out that OPC, John? They don't have that. And just explain what's changed on that.
We have, we have added the roof to the, to that project, um, finding out that it needed to be done, and that was in kind of a four-to-five-hundred-thousand-dollar range to replace the roof. We're recommending going in and doing the, uh, buildup insulation over the roof, so that we end up with insulation making the building more energy efficient. It also is really, uh, we've recommended doing a, what's called a, a buildup roof with gravel, um, because of our hailstorms and winds and everything in the Panhandle, it's, it's one of the best roofs that you can put on. It's a, it, they're, uh, there's thirty, forty, fifty-year-old built-up roofs with gravel on them that are still being maintained, and, you know, at fifty years, they need to be replaced, but they, they last a long time, and they're, it's a very high-quality roof, and it's not much more expensive than some of the other roofs, but for a, you know, for a municipality to make that decision, let's go ahead and do the, the best roof possible there.
So that's the change on the Gold Star. That's changed now.
Yeah.
With the roof, thank you.
And I'm in agreement with putting that idea in there for the roof. Uh, John, all this, I'm just sitting thinking, you know, what we're doing here, a lot of the walls were leaving in places where they are, and so I'm wondering if they considered that.
They did. Um, the, the thing about it is, is that, I mean, it's, if we're going to redo a space, um, once we get into it and we start cleaning everything up, um, you know, you have, you have a bunch of bad ceiling tiles where the roof is leaking. Okay, well, we need to replace all the ceiling tiles in the roof. You, you know, we're gonna replace all the carpet, repaint, um, add the new walls, obviously. But yeah, they did consider that. Um, again, it's a high-level view, that's why they, they, they're trying to predict what's gonna be, happen in the future. Um, it's, it's hard to, it's hard at this point for them to, yes, they considered the walls that they were going to keep, and the mechanical that they were going to keep, but the thing that we could get into is, okay, we're gonna replace the tile on the restrooms and the fixtures, what if we get into the plumbing? They, they've got some little contingencies built in for things like that. What if the piping in that restroom is in bad shape, and we don't know about it till we, we don't have X-ray vision, till we get the wall open, and we go, oh wow, so having that little bit, they, they're considering things like that at this point, until we get deeper into it.
So is that in their number, or into our contingency?
They have, they have a contingency that they've built in for things. They have, they have a contingency that they've built in for things like that. And then we have the owner contingency. And that's really for the, you know what, Steve's gone over this and he's decided there's, there's another space that we need to create within this space. And, and, you know, there needs to be some changes that are made. Another effective model that we've used is, for instance, we've got the three shower rooms down in the basement. Well, maybe those, maybe two of those are an alternate. We only have one right now. And we, we just roughen the plumbing and you go finish those out later so that we can keep your number where it needs to be. That's something that we've gotten into though in the past, since 2020, construction costs that we've seen has escalated in the 40, 50% range. It's, it's crazy. It's leveling out fortunately. Um, but they're also trying to predict that, what it's gonna do by the time we finish all the working drawings, since these are just schematic, and then actually issue them, go out to bid with all the subs and everything. And so that's what they're trying to predict there. And that's where you see some of that difference. There's, there's, some of them are a little more optimistic, some are a little bit more pessimistic, I guess, that the prices could go up a little bit more. And that's a lot of what that is. That's why we recommend the average. And that'll keep us, that'll keep us safe to do everything that's needed. Um, but that we won't end up with a bunch of VE, value engineering, which we always joke as devalue engineering, where you start taking things out that were actually important, that, that they needed, you know. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the deal there. And I understand it's, it's difficult to see, see some of that. But you're looking at 19,000 square foot building, um, the $3.9 million kind of average for the construction portion of it, plus what you spend. Not still a great deal. If we were to build a new building that was 20, 19 or 20,000 square feet, we'd be in the, uh, nine or $10 million range is what we're seeing lately, even for a, not a fancy building, but a well-built, you know, well-constructed municipal building. So.
And I've got some other questions. Who all we could use as contractors maybe is as well. But, you know, one question I've got there, and I'm not an expert building, but, you know, in anchor, and I see, you know, construction, you know, especially homes, but, but also probably a lot of the others like the, you know, the trying to still be out. You know, we see a lot of those in cost and all as well. Um, and, and I really see this, and I know it's commercial and we've got commercial folks looking at it, but that's really not different. Uh, you know, uh, somebody that constructs homes and does home remodel, I think could do this project. And, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that that's what we could do, but I guess there's some questions there. You know, I'm sitting thinking, well, you know, if you used a number of $100 a square foot, um, you know, that would be around $2 million to, to go in and, and do remodel and, and, you know, build out walls. And, and I guess, to me, that sounds like a pretty big number where we're able to leave, you know, a good part of the walls. We're not doing any of the structure. And I'm saying roof on top of that. But that just seems like the numbers we've had, uh, you know, prior to are a lot bigger than that. And, and so I'm just struggling how it's costing that much money. Uh, for, I, I love the plans. Don't, don't hear me that, you know, I, I don't want to do what we're talking about doing. I'm just, um, and completely honest too, I'd like some of Canyon's from, uh, Paul Lyons to go dig into and, and, uh, because, I, you know, that's the kind of thing they do day in, day out. That's their business. And, and, and I, I really, I may be missing it. You know, there may be some pieces, the Van Hooij, you know, a few things like that that are not residential, you know, not, you know, a, a piece of what they do day in, day out. But I think for the most part, most of this is. And, and, you know, building out new bathrooms, building out, uh, walls and, you know, replacing carpets and, you know, um, painting everything, uh, updating bathrooms and all too. So I'm, I, I don't know. I, I've been, I've been with John a little bit, but I just am struggling in not all the projects, but with this one project, just with the scope of it. And, and, you know, I thought maybe coming in here, maybe I don't understand all the scope of it. I don't know what kind of numbers put on the exterior. But, uh, you know, I think really all getting theirs in place, we're gonna remove on top of that. So, um, I don't know. I, I'm just questioning the numbers on this project.
Okay. Well, and like I said, I, I gave into, my experts are the, the contractors. And so that's who I, that's who I have to rely on, on the actual numbers themselves. If, if I can tell a story and we, and I, you, you could have watched the video or been there. Um, we had to present to the City of Amarillo Commission before we did City Hall in Amarillo, um, because Mayor Cole Stanley, he builds, but he builds a different level. And, and, and once we discussed that and looked at it, now that he's seen the project, he goes, yeah, this is different than what I build. And, you know, and, and he sees the, he was having a hard time with the cost as well. And so we, we explained it. We talked about it. He finally got on board. And now that he's seen it going, he goes, okay, yep, this is a different level than what I'm used to building houses in light commercial versus the heavier, uh, you know, the, the civic type buildings that they just have. You know, it's a higher, it's a higher quality because you're trying to make it last for hundreds of people coming in and out of it versus, you know, fewer people coming in and out of it. Higher, more durable materials and things like that. So that, that's, that's where some of it is. But, um, no, I, I completely understand the, where, where the disconnect is, is difficult on that building. Um, there's a lot of square footage to it also. So that's, that's part of it as well. So.
But, but I guess a lot of the square footage, the, you know, and I love using the existing walls and all, you know, we're not having to build out our, you know, MO and a complete rebuild. Uh, and then, you know, we got totally into the basement that we're really not touching as we talk to you.
Right. We, we did, we, we have found out on several projects where we did extensive renovations like this. Trying to keep some walls is great. There's, there's been a couple of times that we went in and the, the hassle of having to cut out and add electrical, add data, things like that. It's almost like it would have been cheaper to have pulled out the walls, you know. So on this one, there is some electrical, there is some data, there's some things there. So that, that does help. But, I mean, in the long run, that's, that's the numbers we're giving. I'm not, uh, that, that's what, that's what the, the four contractors are telling us that they, they see at this point. I'm not saying it couldn't go down some. I just don't see it, you know, significantly coming down, if that makes sense.
And these projections are, like the technology piece includes, so like the camera systems for security based systems, is that included in these numbers? Systems for doors?
Yeah, the infrastructure for all of that would be included. And so, um, that, that's one of those things too. Yeah, there's a lot more cameras in this building than there would be in a, you know, a smaller remodel, just some, just an office building somewhere and things like that. So those are some of the things. You know, there's just, there's, there's different things in the amount of technology that you need in the building and, and the redundancy and things like that, that, that are built into a project like this. So. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not saying the numbers couldn't come down a little bit, but I, I just don't see them coming down significant, significantly if we keep everything that, you know, that they need. So.
And I don't know if this is a good time to, to talk about it or not. And maybe it's just, well, go ahead and, and I've got questions. I don't understand. I've, I've not built out, you got Catherine back there and I did that a lot with school projects and understand, you know, uh, construction risks, you know, different types of, of ways to take on a project. You know, with this project, I'd almost rather go in and say, okay, we've got this contractor we really trust. We'll pay you 20% less, you know, costs and, and, you know, take, in this one project and, and take on the risks of getting that done.
When you go through this, I'm gonna say it.
If, if you would for, for my sake and maybe for some of you.
Gary, can we, can we go, can we go through all the projects? Or we, we won't get through those tonight?
Yeah. But I, but I'd be happy to explain the construction management risk when we get to that, whichever way.
Because otherwise, we, we won't get, we won't get through the projects. I'm sorry, John, I'm the computer thing.
No, no problem. We, we're working it out. It's gonna take me an extra second or two to pull it back up when the, the phone goes to sleep.
Yeah, because we really would like to get you all through those. Um, and, and then, and that is planned to, to discuss that also. If we get there tonight or, we're gonna need additional meetings clearly. So we'll, we'll have other opportunities to cover that.
Um, but thank you, Steve. I think that, that's what we've heard from Steve all along. And that was a clear outline of, of what we were, what we need. Um, and I think that the John and Sheila have done a great job of taking what, what we've talked about for two years. Uh, and that doesn't count what we talked about in 2018, right? When we spent a year talking about things then. So we've been down this road and looked at it a million times. We've, we've gone from fire stations to police stations, back to fire stations, to city halls. And we finally think landed in the right place. And I think we landed in the right place because of you all. And you all have been willing and the vision to go forward and, and purchase the Gold Star Building. That changed our whole, what we could do. And so let's, now we're on to the, on to the fire department aspect of it.
Well, here we've got fire station, uh, number one, the existing fire station, right? Right here where we're at. Um, one of the big deals that we're doing is we're taking one of the bays, rounding the floor and renovating it into a two-story interior space, and then remodeling so that we can have living quarters and sleeping quarters. So, uh, you can have 24 hour, uh, fire staff. Um, then refreshing the exterior. And one of the questions that was brought up is, you know, were we trying to match the brick and things like that? So we wanted to add some entrances there that, uh, that were interesting, but that would complement the building, but wouldn't be trying to match the brick. And we'll be able to keep five apparatus bays. And this project, total project cost is projected about 4.2 million. And there's the floor plan. If you want to talk a little bit, I'd be happy to talk as well. We, just same, same thing we did with, with the police. We went with fire. We talked, talked it through, looked at what we could, uh, fit into the existing building and give them all the things that they need in order to have that. So.
So as was mentioned, we're giving up bay number one, which is the Eastern Oaks Bay, which is at the working, what we call the working fire station. Uh, one of the biggest goals in with this remodel is to build a safe, safer and more healthy work environment for firefighters. Uh, in fire stations, we like to have a clean area, an intermediate area, and then what we call dirty area. That's, that's where the trucks are, exhaust fumes, uh, and things like that. And I'll get into about our PPE gear in just a little bit. But as you come through the, um, entryway, uh, through the vestibule, uh, we do have an entryway there. Um, we have, uh, developed a little area when, we do have guests come in, uh, from time to time, uh, to talk, maybe former members of firefighters from other areas. So we've, uh, developed a small little coffee bar area, sitting area in there, uh, this display area. It's just planned on having our photos on the wall of some of the larger fire scenes we've had throughout history. Uh, lots of black and white photos that have been collected. Uh, conference room, of course, uh, area for the on-duty crews to come in and have, uh, meetings and even small training. Be used as a small training area. Uh, there's a study office, uh, just like right now. I have two firefighters that are going through their paramedic training right now. They're always looking for a quiet place to go to get their studying done when time allows while they're on duty. Uh, so that can be provided to them. Three offices, uh, starting off, it'd be, when we do go to 24 hour staffing, there'll be three shifts, A, B, and C shift. Uh, that's given each one of those shift lieutenants an office that they can work out of. Future plans down the road, looking 20 plus years down the road, as other positions are needed on the fire department. It's planned that the lieutenant's shift office, all three would share one office down the road. There never, uh, there's only one lieutenant on duty at, at a time. So that would work out just fine. But, uh, start off with each, um, shift lieutenant would have their own. Uh, working through the, what we call clean area or the green area, it would be the report room as well. Uh, this is the area where firefighters go. And after each run, firefighters are responsible, file their reports, just like the police officers are. Uh, we have a reporting system that has to be filled out. So this would be the area that their computer workstations would be set up. Um, all that is pretty much within our green area, coming into like an intermediate area is our SCBA room and the decon laundry room. Uh, right now, the, our, um, decontamination area is in our SCBA room where we fill air bottles and we try to keep that as clean as possible. But there is a chance for cross contamination. So we split that up. The SCBA and equipment room would be where our compressor is, extra air bottles. And that is what would be going on in there as well as, uh, maintenance on our SCBA when needed. Uh, the decon area, laundry area, that's just what it is. It's an area where we launder dirty items. Uh, our clothing, our PPE extractor would be in that room as well. It's a special washing machine for, uh, turnout gear. And it, as you can see, some sinks in there. One of the big things that we're needing to accomplish with this remodel is to get our turnout gear out of our engine room. Uh, you've been over there. All of our turnout lockers are in the engine room. It's exposed to the exhaust particles from the engines running, uh, pulling in, leaving, uh, as well as, um, UV light through our doors right now, which is a, uh, degrades the material pretty rapidly. So this gets all of our PPE lockers in a designated area that would have its own ventilation system. And, uh, that way we'd keep all those contaminants in there. Um, I don't know what else to say other than we have truck area and, uh, where the trucks are stored. Moving up to the, uh, appears to the second floor, we are, um, planning on expansion in the future with our career staff. Uh, so currently with this, in this plan, there are sleeping quarters for nine people. The shift lieutenant has their own, uh, quarters with another work desk in there. So that even in the evening, if he has a little bit more paperwork to do, he's not having to be down in his office. He can be up there in his quarters, uh, getting some of that done. Uh, eight sleeping areas or bed areas, uh, for the on-duty crew, uh, which would accommodate for our future staffing as well as looking down the road. Who knows? In 20, 30 years, we may be running ambulances out of our station. So that gives additional staff or additional locations for, uh, on-duty crew, even with two EMS operators, uh, working there. Uh, shower facilities, um, we do not have any shower facilities at this stage right now. So all these will be new areas. Um, the one shower room over to the far right by the back stairway, that is, uh, currently a, uh, bathroom. So plumbing is available right there. Uh, and as you know, we do have, uh, uh, mixed gender fire crews now. So we have to look at, uh, you know, lining up and having more private shower areas. And with this, that gives us, uh, four shower areas upstairs. Moving on into our dayroom area and dining area, just an area big enough for a crew of six, possibly eight if EMS is involved as well, uh, to be able to eat. A large kitchen area, three patries, one free shift. Uh, that way each shift can store their own eating items, uh, what they need. Another laundry room, this laundry room upstairs, you may be thinking, why do we need a laundry upstairs if we have a laundry room downstairs? This is, would be a clean laundry area, like maybe bed linens, uh, things like that. You do not want to wash your bed linens in the same washing machine that you're washing your dirty rags in and everything else has contaminants on it. Uh, this low storage area, that's just an area above the current station where we have a, uh, change in, um, uh, roof elevations. And, uh, that would just be an area that's not really, doesn't have the height to be a normal storage area, but it still, uh, would be a good storage space for things that we need up there. Uh, as far as the fire station itself, that's pretty straightforward on our needs.
We've got room for a fire pole.
Oh, yes, fire pole.
They have programmed every inch of that space. If you look at that, there is no, there is no extra.
Oddly enough, where that fire pole is shown is roughly, though it is the location when the building was built 50 years ago, the pole was taken out of the design, but that's where it was gonna be.
So if you wanted a fire pole then, is that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Was a fire station without a fire pole.
Been told by all the firemen that have been in stations with fire poles, and we've done, we've done one station with fire pole. Um, you don't want to take it, but when there's, when, when it's a need, you know, when time is of the essence, the fire pole is the way you, uh, you go. So you, you hope when the call comes, you're downstairs, you don't have to take the fire pole. So.
And the, and the dayroom is a dark, cold space, if it's like the other fire station that we visited.
Yes.
And it's a place that, that they want to be cool and sit in their recliners and relax. And it's a big man cave.
And it's on the, um, go back down to like the vestibule when you're coming in from the ground floor.
Yes, ma'am.
Who's gonna man letting people in and out of there? Cause that's, we're worried about visibility. Yeah.
There's gonna be a doorbell, doorbell ring. Whoever's on duty comes to the front door to let them in.
So you won't technically have a waiting area? You'll, somebody will escort them wherever they need or handle that?
The doors into the vestibule will remain unlocked. The secure door will be the door that leans in there. That way you can get in out of the window, out of the rain.
Yeah, yeah.
We have the, but we have that at all the fire stations. We've done it in Amarillo also. We even have a safe room so that if, if you want to have the deal where someone can drop a baby off, that's, that's the place to do that. That there'd be, there's a pass through there.
Where Vince's office is?
I believe where currently planning and development is. Our plan, the plan is from planning, development moves out of that, we will occupy that area for fire administration. Which is also connected to the fire station through doorway. Which is also connected to the fire station through doorways. You do not have to go outside to get into the fire station.
And that's included in, in this to go do, do some light remodel in that area, keeping, keeping the offices basically essentially how they are, but, but, you know, cleaning up, new flooring, new paint and things like that.
Nice thinking on this one. The cost is really low.
Less than we thought. You bet.
Well, and that is the advantage that, as you move the pawns around on the chessboard, some of the things, you know, may, may adjust. Having all these together, I think, is a really big, a really good thing for the city to go in and do that. And I know, not getting into that right now, but if it was one contractor taking and doing all of these things and moving that around and making sure, you know, and they could, you know, we can phase it that way and everything. And it, it alleviates, you have a lot of responsibility of making sure the phases work other than they say, we'd like this space, can we have it? No or yes, you know, kind of deal, so.
Also, I forgot to mention that this does include the addition of an elevator being installed in the building.
Yes, thank you. Which is, we have to do to meet TOS and ADA. So going to the fire training or anything?
Good on that.
Are there any questions?
The fire training facility is a classroom and storage, uh, classroom that is divided, uh, can be divided at 6250 square feet. There are three bays there for, uh, vehicle storage and a 1,280 square foot classroom with an operable, uh, walls. That can be divided into two smaller classrooms. There's a coffee bar, there's restrooms, there's shower facilities. So if they're doing trainings out there, they have a place to go clean up. Uh, exterior patio, it's, it is a metal building, but we've got a burnish block, wainscote around the building to protect the building. And, um, and then here's the, here's the plan, the site plan, it's out at your training area. You have any?
Um, going back to the fire station remodel with the, showing that those eight sleeping areas are, that is our current training room. So we need a place to train. This building has been thought about for several years. Um, and, uh, just felt, given up the classroom, we got to have a classroom somewhere. So let's incorporate it with our training room or, or training field. And, uh, for several reasons, I'll, I'll get into in a second. But our classroom space, uh, pretty straightforward here, uh, restrooms. We do not have restrooms at our training field right now. Uh, when we have fire school, it's the use of portable toilets and hand washing stations. Yeah, it works, but it's not real good. Uh, this would give us, uh, actual indoor restroom facilities at our training field so that when we do host training sessions and our annual fire school, we'll have that as well. Uh, the, the, uh, vehicle parking areas be very critical during winter months when it's freezing. Uh, anything that would be stored in here, uh, could be pulled out because we would not have freezing concerns on that. All the equipment in there would be water-free if they have tanks on them. But, uh, this would give us three bays to bring apparatus in, say on our Wednesday night trainings, uh, that's heated, uh, to keep, uh, any freeze-up concerns while we're training for, for three to four hours.
So would those bays be large enough to pull one of the trucks into?
Uh, anything we have would fit in there except for our 18-wheeler tanker. Um, so the, I feel the fire training building is pretty straightforward there, uh, on the needs there. While we're talking about that, we can jump over to the burn house since it's out there. Those plans and specifications have already been written for a couple of years now. Uh, that's why I guess we do not have a floor plan here, but, uh, going over to the burn facility, as you know, we've been without a burn house for about four years now. And tying all this into ISO now, uh, we do get credit, our ISO rating for having a training field that's really supposed to have a burn facility. So, uh, when they were here on our last, uh, ISO survey, they noticed that we didn't have one. I showed them the slab and said, it's in progress. So good with that, but it has been four years. And so, uh, why the burn house? Why is that so important? Our firefighters, volunteer and career, should be going through a couple of live burn scenarios every year. Without this, the only option we have is to go to Emerald College. Logisticsally and to keep the city covered as well, that doesn't work. So, uh, this, uh, burn facility would be for us, the fire school, any other, uh, fire department that wants to come in and use our facility. We, in the past, when we had our old burn house, we did have some, uh, other area departments come in and burn, uh, burn with us. We have mutual aid training with the burn house with us in Randall County, coming in, working side by side. We've done that on several, several years on Saturdays. Uh, that just increases the working relationship with us in Randall County since they are, are most likely mutual aid partners when we need help. But, uh, all that kind of ties into the, uh, fire training field needs out there.
Craig, can you speak to the burn house?
Sure.
What I did is I asked Craig to go through the plans of the burn house because there were questions about, about the plans and that kind of thing. Craig has reviewed the, has reviewed the burn house and can give us some information based on, on what he's learned.
I was kind of like you. I thought maybe it was a little bit too expensive and so I thought maybe I would go and.
I don't get, I, I won't learn something. Yeah.
But after looking at these specs and what have you, and I, I thought that NFP, uh, 1403 would give us something, but it gives us absolutely nothing to work with as far as building a, um, one of these kind of structures. So, um, these prices that we got were pre-COVID and so, or right at, well, not pre-COVID, right at the, right at the end of COVID. And so the prices are still high. And, um, they're probably, just like John said, 50% of what they were in 2099, or yeah, I mean, 2019, they were, they were, uh, relatively inexpensive. But then once COVID came, changed everything up. So, um, all of the framing material, everything, it's going to have to be coated with, uh, intumescent coating to keep it from burning down every time. Cause how many times we go plan on use that, a hundred times?
At least.
Yeah, at least.
You're going to burn it five or six times a year.
Yep. You want to do it for 20 years?
Yes.
30 years? So we got to protect it somehow. Uh, the roof shingles are a class four, they're expensive, uh, they're very good shingles. Uh, they can take up to 650 degrees, um, the way they are, um, 150 mile an hour wind. Everything that the engineer did, because he didn't have anything to go off of, like I said, 1403 doesn't help, uh, was specked. And it had the, uh, ASTM rating or a spec on every one of those, even down to the screws and to the nails on the roof. They were, every one of them. And it's, so the only way to do that is to make sure that this is going to be long-lasting. Uh, the concrete, I don't know how much concrete's going to be poured. Um, concrete is typically 3,500 to 4,000 pound, but this concrete's 5,000 pound concrete. Uh, it's a little more expensive. Concrete and steel, uh, Paul can attest to this, went through the rough and wood, went through the rough at COVID. Concrete, price of Portland, and the price of steel hasn't gone down very much at all. Wood, lumber, things like that, it's gone down a little bit, but not, not too much. With that concrete, it's going to have to be tested three times for each, one at the pour for slump, one seven days after the pour, and then one at 28-day, uh, and three different tests for each one of those. So, uh, that's a little bit expensive, but that's the way it has to be as far as the engineer's concerned. The exterior walls are hollow block, lightweight, but they're, they're weight-bearing. Uh, they're only filled where rebar comes up, uh, from the slab and the rest of them are hollow. And where the joints, they have a, they have joints, uh, expanded, expansion joints on four, or one on each side. Um, and, uh, other than that, the, um, everything that is permeable, that can soak in water, has to also be coated with a waterproof coating to keep it from soaking up water during, during these, uh, these times too. So just to protect it. Um, eight three-by-three access panels. Uh, they're there for their safety. If somebody, there was a problem and, and guys had to go in and get these, somebody that was having a problem, they have to be there. Those are expensive. They're two-hour walls, they're, they're a two-hour access. Uh, there's two 3070, uh, man doors, uh, one on each side. Those are two-hour accesses also, so they're going to be, uh, a little bit expensive. But this is all for safety, pretty much. So if y'all have any questions, I.
I don't understand the cost of, you know, the additional safety. But it just seems awfully high. You know, I think it's about $200 a square foot and, you know, folks who build a house, you know, with a lacquer and plumbing and, you know, insulation and windows and all for, you know. It, it doesn't move. It just seem like, right? It's probably not worth our time, you know, taking a whole lot of work to do. Maybe Paul or Danny can, you know, help get educated and educate people at work. They're not perfect. So you bet.
But, and no one builds what that is. I mean, no one, no one builds that to that spec.
Exactly.
Unless they were going to build a house that burns. I mean, that, that, that's the difference in the nails and the screws and everything that's in it, is that that, that is a house that burns. And all of our houses burn. We have safety features to help us fight that. And if I built a cinder block house, if I just went and built a cinder block house, I couldn't burn it over and over like I'm, like I'm burning that. I mean, that, that's where that cost comes from, Gary, is the fact that all those things are certified, not, certified's not the correct word. What's the word I'm looking for?
Specified.
There are specs. Like UL under laboratory and, and, you know, you all know what I'm talking about, that they can be burned and not burnt. I mean.
Well, not fail.
Correct.
Because the tremendous heat.
Correct.
You know, it causes, it causes the materials to all degrade and then, you know, that, that's the big problem with a fire, even if it doesn't burn something to the ground, it may need to be scraped off because it's had so much deterioration to the materials.
That, that's where that cost is coming from. We just wanted y'all to, that's why we had Craig to, to do that, so you could get an idea where that was, where that was coming from.
We've got the physical training building. It was brought up that, uh, we had originally done, uh, some numbers to take the existing auxiliary fire station just to the north of here and remodel it. And we asked, was that the best thing to do? And Dennis was concerned about having the storage that he needed for the vehicles and things. And we said, well, could we add on to it or could we build a separate building? So what we're showing here is doing a separate 1,500 square foot physical training building, um, all of, all of the, uh, firefighters are required to have, uh, I can't remember what was the timing and everything, but they, they need a place to, uh, physically work out so that they can perform their job. And so the thing was brought up is do we do this building and redo the parking lot out there so you have parking? Or we could take just that building and basically do it as an addition to the existing auxiliary fire station there for about half the cost that we're showing there, is what everybody, is what everybody told me, that the, the parking lot was about half the cost and the, the building was about half the cost. When we look at the numbers there for the physical training, it was somewhere, you know, in the $700,000 range plus then the, uh, rest of the expenses and contingencies. But the building itself was somewhere in about a $350,000 range if we were to do that. Something to remember about, any building that we designed has to be, uh, not designed just as a barn, but to be designed so that people can inhabit it. So it has higher wind loads and all that that we have to, we have to do there.
How many square feet is that?
It was a 1,500 square foot building and then the parking lot would hold 47 cars. And we were putting a restroom with a shower similar to what you're seeing in the, in the, uh, fire station and in the basement of the police station and a small locker room so that they'd, you know, they'd have a place to change if they were working out and needed a place to change right there.
So that would be the 957?
That would be the total cost, that would be that entire parking lot and the building. It'd be about half of that cost if we were to take and, and just do an addition over there, not do anything with that parking lot that's existing. Cause what we're doing is we're repaving a smaller portion of the parking lot and then we're paving a, a big piece so that we'd have a, we'd have a, a much larger parking lot over there, uh, just to the north here.
So, so parks, let's say 300 and?
The, the building about 350,000 plus all the other miscellaneous expenses, you'd be in the, you know, 425.
Okay, so 425, just to add on to the current station, the auxiliary station, just to add that extra bay? And how about, would that be equivalent in size?
Yes, same size. We could, we could fit that same building. So that was the thought process is do we want to tie onto that existing building or build it across the way? It's, it's, it's a similar, the building itself is a similar price because you're going to, you know, you might save just a little bit adding on, um, because you'd have that one wall that was existing there, but, but again, that didn't move the needle very much is kind of the, the thought process from.
And as long as you have 1,500 square feet, Dennis?
Craig, uh, we're currently utilizing a cramped, uh, 872 square foot.
Okay.
Of the existing building over there.
So you'd pick up 872 square feet to put something else, it's another place for Vince to be? Okay.
Spread out our equipment.
Spread out your equipment, yes. And then that, that would open that up. And then you would, whether you, whether you have 1,500 square feet added on or a separate building, is that of, is that of a, is that a pressing need either way for you? Do you care?
I do not care. Uh, away from where the trucks are running is the best for health reasons. Uh, that is one of the big problems we have right now in the existing facility. Uh, I'll back up just a little bit. Texas Commission on Fire Protection requires me to give on-duty firefighters at least, um, one hour, I believe it is, at least one hour to work out for physical training. Um, so we have to provide that space. This space is normally within a fire station. However, you can see with what we're dealing with, we do not have the room for it. So that's why, uh, it was originally put over there. We didn't have the room for it then, even with the remodel, we don't have room for it now. Uh, so, but where it is right now, it is exposed to, uh, just like in our engine room, exhaust. All those particles come down, contaminate the equipment, the guys are over there working with it. Yes, they do work to keep that equipment clean. Uh, they are very proud of the equipment they have over there. The city has purchased some of that, the volunteer members, uh, through the firefighters association has, uh, has purchased a lot of that equipment over there. Uh, so not only do our career staff use, utilize that, we have numerous volunteers that go over there on a regular basis and utilize the equipment too.
Could we really pave that lot in the way?
John, do you have, is that cost?
No, if, if we, if we just add on to it, that cost isn't, isn't in there. That, that whole number would pave that lot and you could put the building either place, basically, if that makes sense.
Okay, so you're going to call that the same amount?
Yes, whether, whether you add on or whether you.
The 957 is paving a lot and, and adding on.
And adding on or building it there, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, you're, you're.
We understand.
Yeah, again, yeah, there'd be, there'd be a small difference there because of you, well, you get to, you just pay that extra 1,500 square feet. Well, again, that's in the, that's kind of in the rounding, you might say, so.
Great.
I might add also, it's not just Kang and firefighters that utilize this. City employees are welcome to use the equipment by signing an agreement with this and they get added into the security system, uh, for access to that as well as other, uh, public safety agencies. Randall County SO, several of their guys use it. Currently Kang and PD's over there using it too. Uh, but it is a very well-utilized area.
The final thing that we have is the renovations, taking the old fire station, I'll zoom in here, taking the old, I'm sorry, taking the old police station and turning that into the new, uh, public works and, uh, planning and development space. We walked through that space, there's some walls that need to be added, there's, you know, and, and so that was kind of, that's kind of that kind of number that take and remodel that all. There's also a new elevator that goes to the basement within that number that could be broken out. But while we're doing this work, it makes a lot of sense to get an elevator to the basement so if, when the basement, so we can be compliant basically with, with ADA and TOS because that basement not having an elevator to it, you can't really utilize it for anything that you don't have the same service on the first floor, so.
This is the only piece that we, all of this is safety. All of this is, is fire and police. This is the only piece where we're still in discussions with, with our finance folks and the Attorney General's office to determine whether at doing renovations in planning and development still falls under a, the same.
Proposition.
Bond proposition. Thank you, Joe. Help me with this, Joe.
This would involve, if, if the AG's office says, no, you can't do all this as a public safety proposition to take to the voters, then we'd have to do it in two, two separate pieces. pieces. So everything down to this point would be one proposition for public safety. This other would just be for general government for this last piece to do that, if, if they ruled that way. And at this point, we're not sure if they would allow for all of us to be one proposition as a public safety.
Who's going to be using?
At this point, there's no specific plans on.
You couldn't say the elevator is part of the fire?
Not exclusively, but the AG's office might rule that, yeah, it's, it's primarily for, all this is being done for a fire department. We, we wouldn't be moving planning and development if it weren't for the fire department. So in my opinion, it should be all public safety, but.
We're working through that. We're trying to get an answer.
Apparently, the AG's office has gotten much more critical on these, these top projects and have, have been harder, harder, harder to guess what they're going to, is what we're hearing from Jason.
And we've cleared that up. We're close with them, I think, to getting an answer. And so we're also looking at other uses for the basement that would, that would help tie, uh, all of this into one, into one bond package.
Out of this 1.1 million for this area, how much of that would be if we only, if we decided we could only do just the elevator to, to, do we have include what that would cost?
Well, the thing about it, and we've put a lot, we've put elevators into several buildings. You have to go into the interior of it. It's, it, there's a lot of handwork that has to be done because you have to go down in the basement and there's literally guys down there with shovels digging the pit for the elevator and everything. So, um, they, they gave me kind of a range, but you're, it, it's a lot more expensive than just say, hey, we're, we're, we're putting an elevator in a new building and we, we kind of pencil in for a two story elevator nowadays is about 150,000. So you're talking 200, 250,000 to get the elevator in place. But then you're all compliant with everything.
Correct, and we're, we're still to figure out the use and all of those kind of things for that.
And this, that number has a little bit of money in there to remodel those restrooms to make them compliant, you know, ADA and TOS compliant. That's a, you know, it's a big deal. When you're, when you're doing a project, the, the thought process has always been, well, you're remodeling the whole building, you need to go ahead and remodel a couple of bathrooms to get them up to compliance so that someone can get into the five by five stall and everything with a wheelchair and so.
So really, that's, this is the only leg of it that we're still trying to feel confident And then on, on top of those would be, you saw in the last, in our last presentation that we would propose, um, the, the 400,000 toward the, uh, animal kennels as far as building a, a shelter, an animal shelter for the city of Canyon. Other than that, we've been through them all, John, right?
Yes.
Cost wise, uh, we're anticipating for handheld pay for that, uh, in the training facility, but we also be looking at, at the fire truck.
And, and the, and the million, you've got, you've got the, you've got the, uh, the million for the fire truck that's on that list that I, that I had for you last week. There's a million for the fire truck and the 400,000 for the kennels, for the animal shelter. And that's that, we feel confident that, that, um, the 15 that we've talked to you about, those things would be included in the 15, that we would be able to work through all of these that John has given us and all of this and, and, and bring you that home at, at the 15 million mark.
And John, the fees that we're anticipating that, uh, federal government will help us with, what, what does that mean?
We, we just, Bo, we, I'll let Bo address that. We just had.
We, uh, we, we met, um, uh, in a Zoom meeting yesterday trying to give progress on when we can expect that. They are still not making any commitments.
What was the number?
That number for the training facility, let me pull it up real quick. Um, we requested, uh, the total project, 1,746,250 dollars. They would provide 35% of that. The amount that has actually been awarded right now exceeds that 35%. And so we are not yet clear as to why, um, the award amount is higher, whether or not we're going to get to keep that or not. There, there's still a lot of questions up in the air that we're not getting answers on.
Things are in transition in Washington DC, if you can imagine right now. And the individual that we were working with in, in Ronnie Jackson's office now works for the pork industry and not for Ronnie Jackson's. Imagine that, from pork barrel to pork, but, um, so he is, we have someone new that we're talking to. It, and as Bo said, we were over, we were over awarded as we would perceive the grant.
Correct.
Therefore, we are not 100% sure of what we would. At minimum, Bo, that would be, the low number would be?
35%. Let me pull that out over here real quick. Somebody already did it?
61,000.
There you go.
61,000.
No, that's what we.
It's 35%.
600,000.
Six, oh, 611,000, sorry.
600,000, 60, I was like, oh gosh, wait. 600,000. And because we've, Joe, I think, Bo, I think we've talked about seven is a number that we've been talking about.
That's the number we've been throwing around, 700.
Yeah, but we're going to, we, we, when we see that money, we'll know it's here, is our concern with that. But it would certainly help on the road.
It would be nice to know, yeah, there's one, same to look up. And I think, you know what, I did find out, I think right now they've got, what would be in it, 111? Is that the number right now? I wrote that down, didn't know.
That, that was 35% of the training field and the truck.
And the truck together. John, you want to put a bow on it and then, and then talk to, and Gary, talk about those funding mechanisms or, or the processes of doing that or whatever questions y'all have?
6 o'clock, I don't know preference. Do we want to, we talked about that in another meeting or?
I'm happy to give us a quick synopsis of the construction manager at risk so that you understand that piece of it if you, but, I mean, I can give a, give a five minute little synopsis that I think helps, help everybody have a, a good understanding, but it's up to y'all.
No, it's for you.
There's, there's multiple ways that we can do a project. We can do what has been typically done by cities, which is called a, you know, design, bid, build. We design it, we put the drawings together, we put it out on the streets for bids. What happens there is, um, if you're able to, with, with the mechanism of the city of Canyon, bid it through purchasing or however that, however you all decide to do that, um, you will get, you can decide whether to break these up into six individual things or it's one big project or it's somewhere in between. And you split those out on the street and bid and you receive bids from every contractor that is interested in bidding on it. And I'll tell you a very quick story. City of Amarillo, we had three fire stations that we did kind of right in a row. The first two were twins and they were single company, two, uh, two bays each. The third one was a two company station with three bays. There was a contractor and I don't even, I never even heard of him. Nobody probably is either, but he's, he was fly by night. He came in and he did a request for informations act, uh, said, I want to know what those fire stations cost. He got that number, went and added a little bit of money to them and turned in a bid that was a million dollars less than the other bidders on that bigger fire station. And fortunately, he couldn't get bonded because it would have been a nightmare for the city of Amarillo to dealt with because he wasn't qualified nor did he actually have, all, all he did was he went, well, I can build that for about what they built those for. And things like that can happen. So that's a design, bid, build. We can do a.
And there's an expense to that in that we would pay?
You would pay, yeah, you would pay for our services and fees and our, our mechanical, electrical and plumbing and structural engineers would be included in that. We would do, we would have the civil that we needed to do on those sites where we're building the new buildings and doing additions. And that would all be upfront costs and then we would bid that project.
And do we have to take low bid or do we get?
That is, that's the thing is it depends on the mechanism that you have set up with the city of Canyon.
Yes.
You don't have to take, I, I don't know if you have to, if you can have a best value bid versus low bid.
It is best value bid. We set the criteria that each bid is graded on bef, that's included with the request. So everybody knows what their proposal is going to be bid on that, not just price.
We could, so we could score it that way.
So, Mo, I have a question. So can those criteria be, uh, past experience with these contractors and their timing and availability? Are those some of the criteria you could use when you're ranking them?
That is correct.
Yes.
Yeah, there, there are several things and we've, sadly, sometimes the, the cheaper bid who was actually qualified contractor, they didn't fill out the right thing and I've, I've had that where they got, they got bumped and then the city ended up actually paying more even though that one was con, uh, you know, they were qualified. It's just that there was, there was some, you know, there was some T's, some Ts that weren't crossed, some Is that weren't dotted when, you know, depending on all the paperwork that had to happen, so. But that is one way that that can be done.
That's design, bid, build.
Design, bid, build. We design it, um, you're, you're paying, uh, for us, um, maybe up to, up to 80% and then we bid it and, and then the last 20% is, you know, uh, bidding in our construct, during the construction administration portion. There's, there's another way that we can do is called a construction manager at risk. That's where you put out a proposal, a request for qualifications to contractors and would say, we need you, we need all that information. You need to meet all of our qualifications here and we need to, we need to understand this. And now you're, you start out from the very beginning and one of those questions can be, what is your fee? On a project this size, I'd guess the fee would be somewhere between, um, six, seven or eight, 8% would be their fee on top of it. Um, and like I said, that's just a guess, that, that all, that all get in there. And you can negotiate that with them, um, or, and that can be maybe one of the criteria if you're concerned about it. But usually we see them that they're so close, that's not even one of them. It's, it's who is most qualified and you think you can work with and think they can keep your schedule and, and things like that. So, um, what's great about that is say you make the decision, okay, the bond passes and you say, okay, we're going to hire a construction manager at risk and we start drawing, you know, we, we take from this point, we pick up, we're working with them from the very beginning right there, just like we worked with these, but now they have a vested interest. They know they're doing the project and they're going through and we're working on things that we can potentially have some cost savings. We can get more bang for the buck and get all, you know, all the pieces, uh, in there.
You get the benefit of those cost savings.
Exactly. And they go out and they still bid for all the subcontractors. They still bid three electricians and three painters and three, you know, or, you know, you're hoping for more than that. So that's, that's the benefit that you have and then it's open books. They lay the books out in front of you and they say, here's the bids on bid day, here's how much everybody's, uh, here's how much everybody is. And they're all, you know, all up on the board and you go, well, we've had a really bad experience. They say, we've had a really bad experience with this particular subcontractor and do, we, we would really like to use these other guys and they, they cost $10,000 more, but we're going to have a much better quality product from our experience. And they give you that. And you have the right to make the decision or you may have people that have done business with the city of Canyon that are on that, that bad list that haven't, you know, they haven't, they haven't done things right. You can say, well, they, they bid on it, but I'm sorry, they can't do work in our city because they've, they've not treated us correctly. And you, you know, that, that's the, that's the really good part about that. And the big advantage to it is, is that in the end of the day, you may not, uh, you, you, you've saved money in ways that are, are good ways to save money. It wasn't making it cheaper, it was making it better. It was, it was doing things high quality still, but, um, they've come to us and they said, you know, this particular material, it costs a lot more and there's this other material that's being suggested. We have the time to do the research on it and go, yeah, it is a high quality material. Let's switch those out and, you know, save, save some money in that, you know, in the end and now spend it on something that's more important, um, or, you know, or that, you know, that we'd rather spend money or that we were kind of going, boy, we, we need it, but we'll have to live without it. We don't want to do that, you know? So that's the advantage to that, construction manager at risk. And they're working with us from the very beginning and you have a good, you know, you can have that relationship there. And on a project this size, we've seen, you know, uh, lots of people do that.
John, is it accurate to say that you use the construction manager at risk? They give you a guaranteed maximum price?
They do. When, when, when this is all said and done, they take our drawings and they've taken all these, thank you for bringing that up. They take our drawings and they give us what is called a guaranteed maximum price. What that means is, is that we take and we have a, a final cost for the construction and even, you know, with all of our soft costs, it's, it's $11 million. I'm just throwing a number out there so you, you know, as an example. And they say, we won't go over that. So what they're doing is they're taking on the risk. If they hire that painter and he goes bankrupt or he runs out of time and they have to take the next bid that's $25,000 more, you don't see that. They have to eat that. That's the risk that they are taking. What's also good about that is that we can work with them and say, we don't advertise this, but we have a contingency that we've set aside that we don't have to come back for every little, uh, we found out that that plumbing line was bad, we're going to have to go ahead and spend $5,000 to change it. Well, we're, we're all working together and everybody's monitoring that at every single construction meeting and that comes up, hey, we had to change this, here's the cost. Yep, we got to proceed forward and keep moving and keep the projects moving. They also have a, you know, it's also an advantage to them to keep the, the, the schedule and keep the schedule because their general conditions every month that costs them money to be here that you're being charged, well, they've given you a guaranteed maximum price and they say, this is going to be an 18 month project and then it takes them 20 months. Again, now they're eating that extra two months of cost. It's not them cost plus coming back to you and saying, well, yeah, we spent a couple extra months, y'all need to, you know, you need to pay us for that. So there's a big advantage to it and we're seeing a lot of municipalities and public entities that are using, that are using that method. There's also what's called design, build, which works very similarly. It's just that you would hire them and us together and we would be working together and you just have one contract, you know? It's not, you know, some, some people really like that so that the architect and the contractor are, um, they're writing one check, basically, is what it ends up being. It, there's no cost advantage necessarily there. And the contractors that I think that would go after projects this, you know, if you lump all these projects together, um, we've worked with them, you know, we've worked with them all and, you know, have, have a good working relationship with them, so.
For say, construction manager at risk, did we use, we've not done hardly anything, this is it, not really done anything. Can we use references from CISD?
For sure. Oh, of course, of course. We're going to gather every piece of information we can concerning that. You bet.
And we can use that in our decision.
As individuals, yes. You could glean that information from them and, and carry that knowledge to the, our process. You bet.
In construction manager at risk, we, we really, they get to, to pick, there's not the same scoring.
Well, and that, usually you use a scoring system.
Have to score.
And that's how you, that's how you pick who.
Have to score.
Yeah. And that there's a scoring system that you would have to, whether, I don't know if you have something that's already developed for, for that.
Yes, similar, we'd have to tweak it.
And it can, and that's the thing, that it can be tweaked in order to, to specifically fit this project. How many times have, you know, this is a big deal. Okay, we're, we're doing six different projects that are in four different locations. Well, that's, that's logistics it's going to take there and, you know, how they man these projects. Are you going to have a superintendent for every single project? Because that's going to cost more money. Are you going to have one superintendent and you're going to inform it at each one of these projects so that there's always, you know, there's always a, you know, XYZ contractor representative on site on these projects and is, and is watching everything that's happening. representative on site on these projects and is watching everything that's happening? So there's things like that that you can, that you can write into that scoring system and say, you know, that's acceptable to you that you've made that decision. As long as you have a representative there who's qualified, we're fine. Didn't have to be an actual full-blown superintendent, you know, things like that. The scheduling would be something else that they would help us with. We had to do a project where we remodeled a school, Fannin Middle School while it was under, it was being utilized and we were adding on to it, we were remodeling it, we were doing all this. So we had, we came up with this big document that was the phasing plan of that building because it was a hard bid project like we described first and that had, that changed some and it would have been really helpful actually to have had the construction manager on board then talking to you saying, here's what we're thinking, what are you thinking? And we'd have, we'd have had some more give and take on that and it, I think it could have helped that run a little bit smoother on that particular project. Came off great, but it, that particular, the schedule might have actually gone a little bit faster had they had some input rather than it just being us and the school district that was, that were having the input on that. So there's just a lot of advantages to, at least looking into it, so.
Mike, you've worked through that process, have you not?
Yep.
Construction manager at risk?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think, I think when I was there, I think that's all we did.
For smaller projects, not always, but if you're talking two, three, five million dollars, we use C M R for our last bond projects and it's just.
Yeah.
There's a lot of benefit.
And that's what we did on the residence halls on campus too, eighty million.
I think I understand if they just didn't at all, you know, what if, for me, the one that is going to take most expertise is the fire station built that out structurally. You know, that's just kind of, in my eyes, that's kind of the leak of its own. A lot of the other projects, you know, I could see where there'd be multiple contractors that could do that kind of work. And so I guess my question is, is there thought that we would bid, and I guess we can, but bid one project out separate or two projects out separate versus?
What, I think all of these contractors that we talked with, they would tell you, well, our general conditions, which is what it just costs them to operate, which you end up paying for, if I spread it out over six projects, it's a lot less money than if I spread it out over two projects, if that makes sense. Because again, you have that one superintendent that's taking care of all the projects with some foremen versus now you have multiple contractors and now you have a superintendent you're paying at each project and you have a trailer set up at each one of the sites and things like that. So that would be the advantage possibly there cost-wise that them doing kind of it as a bundle.
Yeah, and you're looking at, so you're looking at multiple construction meetings at that point too because you're having multiple meetings, so you're looking at a time factor in if you're looking at multiple companies. I mean, and then you're also looking at having to keep up with multiple different aspects of each one of those because you're going to want to stay on top of that, who's doing what and making sure and then that's my viewpoint. I would think it'd be easier.
Yeah, we're doing two big remodels on the Amarillo College campus right now and it's four floors of the wear, which is the library and two floors of the old student services, which is becoming student life and IT. And so between, between that, there's six different, there's six floors that we're doing, so it's really six projects if you want to think about it that way because we've got to keep people occupied within the building, we can't take all of it at one time. And we made the decision to use one of the, and it's actually one of the contractors that helped us with the pricing here to do it. And that contractor made the comment to us, he goes, I think we actually have an advantage here on price because, and it's, it turned out that way once we bid it and they're under construction now, because now instead of an electrician crew, they have to have a big crew of twenty guys do all of it at once. Well, now we have a crew of five guys that we worked for an entire, you know, eight months or something that they're working together and they kind of work through each of those pieces. And so he made the comment, I can use smaller subs who are qualified, but that don't have the, you know, maybe the same personnel and get some better pricing that way. So that was, I, we saw him, we saw him say that and then we saw that play out when the project was bid. I'm not saying it would, but I think there's a possibility of that with taking all these small projects because now you're moving, because we can't do all these at once because we can't kick everybody out of this building and so we're moving around to different pieces and we're getting, you know, maybe we're getting the, we're getting the fire training building built while then we come over and we remodel the fire station here because these guys need a place to be, you know, while it's being remodeled. So but some of those, a lot of those same subs are coming from there to over here once, you know, once that's finished, so.
We're pushing on time, but I have a couple of things. I'd love to hear from the committee, their thoughts going through and what they're, moving through all of this and what their thoughts were and then Paul, I'm going to make you talk, I want to hear what you have to say.
I had one question on, I don't know if we were talking about that, are there any, is there any money in there for exterior or is it all interior? Like cameras, asphalt, concrete, fencing?
Oh, it's really all building right now. Looking at the parking lot and everything over there, for instance, at Gold Star, the parking lot's not in bad shape, but that could be one of those things that we build a couple of alternates in to say, oh, we want to go ahead and repave it or at least reseal coat it and stripe it.
Fence it.
And, yeah, and fence it, but no, there's not money in there now, but that, maybe that's where that ten percent contingency goes, goes, that's where we want to go use that money. Everything's looking, everything's tracking well, so maybe that's the place we go use some of that money to, you know, to add some amenities that we were looking to maybe do in the future, so. Yeah, doing the best that we possibly can with the money allotted, so.
Paul, I think you're the one who wants to hear from me.
Well, I don't know, I guess I kind of view as mayor, it seems off life. I'm kind of point where, what do you think the taxpayer is going to approve? Talking about this cost, I don't know, taxpayer approve it, didn't they? I think that's what we need to be talking about.
And that's, those on the committee who are taxpayers, I'd like to know what your thoughts are on where you think a good number is.
I think one big benefit is that this is safety and security. I mean, for people who live here, that's eminently important. And so I think there's a lot of other things that you could ask for in bond money that would be a much harder sell, but because of, we have great leaders in the fire and the police and I think great response times and my husband went to the Canyon Police Academy, we got to see close up and I think our residents appreciate the service that we have. And so I think that's one thing that's really going for this possibility is that it is safety and security.
Yeah, I agree with that and I just think the, you know, the long-term plan on the communication needs to be really strategic and really, you know, communicated in multiple places to sell to public. And I know that's really challenging in this day and age, you know, especially you just look at the recent general election, you know, CISD had their bond issue and, you know, Amarillo had their, you know, big propositions that were on the ballot and I think that really maybe hindered them getting their message out just because there was that additional noise with that.
And you all had, you all have seen this all before. I think if you came to our meetings, you've been through this. I know you didn't make it to all the meetings, but Mike, this isn't the first time you've seen those, right?
No, yeah.
We've talked about these.
Yeah, the only, listening to that, the only interesting thing I would like, I would have liked to know is like we're building a lot of structures inside, how does that cost compared to like modular units? And I, you know, that's movable and your space can be used for other, in the few, ten years from now, you just wheel them over here and you don't have to tear up walls and I just, I just kind of can, I don't really know what the cost difference is in five offices versus five modulators, but I do like the flexibility a modular gives you.
Yeah, and that's something that we could definitely look at, but what we've seen typically is that modular furniture and everything is actually very expensive and so.
It may be, I don't know.
And so we've had, we've had, we've compared some costs like that in the past and you were kind of going, well, do you want flexibility? Because cost-wise, there's not a lot, there's not savings on it for sure. It's real, you know, real similar.
We've always talked about that. It's always been included, we've never ruled that out. I mean, that's why we went to Region sixteen and looked at that, and looked at that rehab because that was a great example. And again.
How much were those in office?
We didn't, I don't have, I don't have a cost for those. We made, we had a random.
We've heard that number somewhere, John, when we were at Region sixteen or somewhere.
Did he give us that?
We've heard thirty thousand somewhere.
Okay.
That's a number that's been thrown out there.
But we can certainly.
Those were, excuse me, I'm so sorry.
We can, we just ruled it out.
Those were nice modulators or whatever, but, but they did say that they spent a lot of money on them, so I don't know.
Yeah, not ruling that out as an option.
So, yeah, like those hundred and offices, what, like hundred and twenty thousand modular pair of six, you know.
Right.
Right. And I think that's the advantage, of course, that's kind of getting into the weeds, but that's an advantage of that construction manager at risk. So we go, well, how much do those offices cost?
That's what we say.
You know, and they go, well, it's fifteen hundred dollars for the door and the frame and the hardware and it's this much for the walls, you know, and then you go, okay, it's a wash or, you know, or there's a clear advantage of which way to go, so.
And, you know, maybe the construction manager at risk could help get there. Paul, I would really appreciate if you'd help me understand really that transition that goes through. That's one, and chief, I'm all aboard getting done, we're talking about getting done, but it's just the dollars there, I'm just struggling to, golly, the hundred dollars a square foot wouldn't build out those walls, you know, do that thing we need to do. So, you know, that's, you know, is that number plus the, plus the, you know, saving a couple million dollars, you know, one type of, I'm just, and I walk through the building itself, I just, it looks like building out, you know, walls, a lot of it, using existing and trying to open carpet paint. Paul, I would appreciate it if you would again to send that too, to help me understand, so.
No, I can't, I can't do it. It's a lot of money, I agree with you.
Craig, off the top of your head, local, people pull permits and we do inspections for remodels and just, it is not the same thing. I will not, I will acknowledge that remodeling that took place at my home will be the same thing that will take, will take place here. I know it's not the same thing. Do you have a, do you have a square footage cost off the top of your head for what you're seeing in town? I'm catching you cold and.
Not on a remodel, no, because you can never tell what you're going to get into when you open a wall, you just have no idea. Once you do open a wall, that's, until you do, you really don't know what you have as far as square foot on a remodel.
I just paid two hundred a square foot to help. I just paid almost two hundred a square foot and that was after four bids. It was two hundred and fifty to add in a square foot, so we didn't do that.
You don't know what you run into as a remodeler. I don't care if it's commercial or if it's residential, you just don't know.
We did a remodel and it was, it was early on in COVID of the Hope Choice over on WT ca, on the edge of WT campus. That's about a nine thousand square foot building, it's three floors, three thousand square feet. On the exterior, you see, we did, we did a modest remodel to the exterior and we painted the brick and did a little bit of stucco work and, and we had, we had to, it only had one stairwell, so it wasn't code compliant, so we added that little balcony. We had to add an elevator and that building cost about two hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot to completely remodel and, and refresh the exterior and everything on it. Two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and thirty dollars a square foot. That's more incomparable with these size of buildings. City Hall for the City of Amarillo is costing about two hundred dollars a square foot, but it's a hundred and fifty thousand square feet and it's, there's, there's half of the basement and there's portions of other, that are future, that are not finished out, so. And that was, you know, doing some remodels of the exterior and completely, you know, remodeling the interior. So that, those, that's not a very good number for this building. The building over here, Hope Choice, is a really good example of what, it's a high-quality building, it's commercial grade. We actually polished the existing concrete in the building on the first floor and put some carpet in and it looks nice, but it's not extravagant finishes at all, so. And that, but that's also, you know, two and a half year old numbers, so.
Yeah, it's a small personal experience. We remodeled the two hundred square foot bathroom, you know, two marble floors, you know, they backed up for a hundred and fifty dollars a square, so.
All right, other, other questions or comments then on that? I mean, is there other things that you want John to cover, you guys?
John, if you'd be available, I think, you know, we might each be interested, you know, maybe discuss if we're, you know, if we have a question on construction manager at risk or.
Sure, of course.
Is your, John, maybe you could get us that.
I'll get that to you.
Yeah, for sure, we'd be happy to talk about it.
Steve, anything for Steve and Dennis on their, on their projects specifically? Would either, would either one of you men say there was any fluff in the projects that you're proposing here tonight?
I'm on my side.
I would say yes on Dennis's side.
And I would expect nothing less, and that has been recorded, that's going to be played over and over.
Classic robbery. Classic robbery.
Chief, you got one question you talked about a little bit earlier. It looks like it's potentially percentage-wise cheaper to add on to the building over here, fire station versus same. How big of a concern is that?
Not as a concern. I mean, either way, I'm going to have a separate, I'm going to have a wall in between those hazardous areas, those unclean areas and where workout facility will be.
But in just adding on, we don't have a full parking lot either in that number.
No, no parking lot in that number.
So if we had the parking lot, it must be more comfortable.
It would be back, yeah, it'd be back basically to that same number.
Great.
All right. Well, construction committee, any, any other thoughts or what? Thank you all for participating, so. So as we get closer to some thoughts on how we put the word out, but also, CISD, you all have seen a lot of, and, you know, problem as well, but, you know, as opposed to the City of Canyon where, I think, you know, I guess the library probably is the last big project.
A cap at six million dollars.
It's true.
I think that, I think that cost, that cost more than the library did, I would assume.
Yeah, I'm thinking more office building. All right. Paul, no other comments? No other comments? Well, John, thank you for being here tonight too.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I'm really hearing consensus, we like those projects, so, you know, figure that out.
And again, it just comes down to, we will, we will meet again next week, next Tuesday.
At three.
At three o'clock. We would, we'll, we'll, we will make that agenda item an action item so that if you choose to take action at that point in time, you can. And then we will not meet again until January the.
First Tuesday in January, so.
I would like to throw this out to the commission too.
January seventh.
Seventh, the seventh of January.
John is really throwing out that we are pressed for time, you know, just on our timeframe here and if we don't, we're going to act on that here, I guess, next time or our first part of January probably is the latest.
We, we have to call the election by February fourth.
February the fourth is.
And so what I'm hearing is that January, first part of January is where we really need to make the call.
Yes, sir. And that helps make and get the information out and start educating the public.
My question is for commissioners and just think about it, if that's the case, and I've already listed with your pro DM and he would be, had some additional agents, but I don't anticipate, I think, you know, a few hours, but would you all be willing, if we had a couple extra meetings in there, would you all be willing to do that between now and January?
Sure.
If it's a short, this only item.
If we do that, we can just send out some dates that you throw out and get a consensus
if that works for everybody.
Are there any, are there, before you go, because, because we won't get to talk to all you again, is there any questions on the bond packages that are listed here? Do you have any questions about where those numbers came from or what those numbers represent? Beau and Joel were prepared to go over any of that tonight if you had any just quick questions that you needed clarified on that.
Or if there's anything else you would like prepared for the next meeting that we can be working on.
Thank you, Beau.
Well, thank you all. I don't know if there's anything else, just that's all that I would. Are we standing there?
All right, thank you all, thank you.
Seven percent, last year was ten, so you said a misconduct.
You guys can be public speaker, you're almost as very close as you should.
I'd say it's so.
Ten, you're average.
You didn't say average, you just said.
The expert night.